We call the Village Board. There's a board meeting to order. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please have all cell phones silenced during the meeting. Item four announcement. The Village Board will convene in a closed session under State Statutes 1985-1C for the purpose of considering performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Public Works Director Review. Item five, I look for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls, motion carries. Public appearances and citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the Board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Hearing none. I look for approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls, motion carries. Item eight, discussion consideration. Resolution 1947. Appointing Officer Alexander Bray. You didn't want to swear him in?
We'll appoint first, probably.
Oh, yeah.
Would you like to introduce him?
I wouldn't, yeah. Sorry, I couldn't do what you said. Alex, why don't you stand up here? I'd like to introduce to the Village Board our newest applicant that came to the top or through our process, Alex Bray. He was formerly with G4S, like an international security service. His assignment was on an American family. They hired a primary former military and law enforcement personnel to work out there. He worked out there for quite some time. And his background is four years in the military. Got out with an honorable discharge. Involved in MATC, the two-year degree program. Went down, put himself through the MATC Police Academy. And we were able to pick him up at fall. So Alex Bray, this is our Village Board.
Nice to meet all of you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Should go around and get some pictures.
We've had before.
Sure.
That's great. Thanks for the chat, Alex.
What branch is it?
Good job there, sir.
Three-fourth. He's the best branch.
Okay, we need a motion to...
Approve the resolution.
Approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls, motion carries. Then I'll swear you in.
You can stand up, Colonel. Whoever's... There you go.
Repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Alexander Bray.
I, Alexander Bray.
Who has been appointed to the office of full-time police officer.
Who has been appointed to the office of full-time police officer.
In and for the village of Navlars.
In and for the village of Navlars.
In Green County.
In Green County.
Swears that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swears that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the rest of my ability.
To the rest of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm going to present his badge to his sister, Lindsay, and let her present his first New Blairs badge, number eighty-four, to Alexander Bray. Thank you, Lindsay. Alex, congratulations. Thank you. We look forward to having you on board. Sure.
Not a photographer. Get it with him first.
There we go. That will do it. Want to shake your hand? Forget she, forget her. Thank you. Pretty sure patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you know, see, Alex.
We're done. If you need to run, just go back and we're in the meeting now. Or continue to work.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Item nine. Discussion consideration. Resolution 1948. Resolution authorizing issuance and sale of $1,540,000 in water and electric system revenue bonds, Series 2019B of the village of Navlars, Bintown, Wisconsin, and providing for payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds. Dave?
I thought everyone was here for you. I thought it was more exciting than that, too. They really ran out of your house. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I think we have some pretty good news for you today. You know, earlier today, we took bids, and you had about five bidders, like you had five bidders, which is really, you know, good. That's what we had for general obligation bonds as well. So you had some good interest in your bonds, and we'll give you a little glimpse into what happened earlier today on page one. So these are the $1,540,000 water and electric system revenue bonds. We did not downsize this issue. Staff asked that we... If there was any premium or any savings on the issuance cost, that we applied that to the project fund. As we're having a two-phase kind of a project here that basically ended up reducing how much we borrow for that second phase. So that ended up being about $39,333. The offering of the premium that came in was about $26,000. And then there was a savings of about $13,000 that allowed us to increase the amount of money that went into the project. So I'll show you the schedule that kind of details how that happened in a little bit here. So this money is, as you know, is for the 2019 through 2021 capital improvements for the electric utility. Like I said before, there was five bids, same as the GO bid. The low bidder was BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. The bidders that you can see are on pages two and three in order of true interest rate from lowest to highest. So you can see that BOK came in at 2.5% and that Bernardi was the high at 2.67%. The difference between those two was about $20,400. When we did the preliminary plan, we were at, I think our interest rate that we had projected at that point was about 2.84. So you underbid that by... They underbidded by about third of basis points, which is really good. Interest rates remain still pretty good. I don't think the rates have done a whole lot since you even did the GO. There's really a little bit of a flip, but I think we're pretty much right about the same market. Interest rates on revenue bonds are a little bit higher, so it's not as good as your GOs, but that's pretty normal. The other thing is because the rates came in as good as they did, we were able to cut $16,800 off the interest. Like I said before, we didn't apply into the premium, which, you know, like in the general obligation, you had a bigger savings look. But because we kept that funding, it only shows up as being a savings on the interest rate. So it is a really good bid because you ended up with $39,000 more for your projects as staff and task force. The one thing that we'll talk about in the next agenda item, but I'll bring it out here, is under the bond trust services part that's in the notes here. What the underwriter did is they actually lumped the 2030 to 2034 payments into a term bond and also the 2035 to '39, I think that's right, into a term bond. And what that means is that instead of selling your... that year's bond as a coupon, they lumped five years together, and that's one coupon. And so what makes a paying agent really important when it comes to term bonds is that when you make your payment in 2030, there's what's called a mandatory call provision that you have to send in to the depository trust company. And that enables them to know that when you make that payment to the depository trust, that they have to notify the holders of those bonds that you're really calling one year or a partial call on that 2035 bond or 2034 bond. So it's kind of a weird thing. And the reason that... One of the reasons that a paying agent is a good idea is because I don't think Lynn's going to be here in 2030.
Don't say that.
Working, working. Hopefully still here. Hopefully still here, but maybe not working. And at that point, somebody has to know that that call provision has to be sent in to the depository trust. And so what you've done is basically by having bond trust be your paying agent, they're going to send in those automatically. That gives you an insurance policy that you're not going to have somebody come back to you and say, hey, you didn't send this in. First of all, the depository trust doesn't know where that money's supposed to even go. And second of all, the person that's holding that bond can say, no, I didn't get a call notice. I'm going to take the interest on the full amount of that block, and I'm not taking that interest. I want the full amount of it because I don't want it pieced away over the year. So that's one of the reasons why paying agents have a good idea because it's such a unique thing. And unless you're really on top of things, it gives you kind of insurance that things are going to get handled properly. The other thing under the notes is, I think I talked about it the preliminary meeting last month, is that on May 1st of 2027, if there's good interest rates at that point, which I'm going to tell you right now, I find it hard to believe out there that that's going to happen because we're in such a good interest rate market. And especially the way that the interest rates were bid on this, that I... You know, it'd be really a crazy good market. And we're already in that right now for those to be called. But if it happens, you can do that any day after or any time after May 1st of 2027. Okay? So I'll just lead you through a couple of the schedules in here. Page four is a comparison of the preliminary that I presented last month to the final. You can see that we added $39,000 in funds in the final column to be used for the electric utility projects going forward. There's a little bit of a change in the debt service requirement. So we didn't need as much in funds there because the debt service requirement is based on the lesser of a couple things. And it's based on your debt service payment in certain years. And so that changes based on how they bid the bonds. So whatever the minimum debt service payment was or in that one year, I think... I don't have it in front of me, but it's what determines that amount. That's why that went down because that one year that it's looking at is less than when we had it in the preliminary run. The underwriter's premium is something that they... What the underwriter does is they try and make this more attractive to their investors. So they throw money at the bid so that they can prop up some of those premium interest rates and make it more saleable to their investors. And then the other thing that happened is we had some reduction in some issuance expenses. Minnesota advisor expense went down because John Cameron, who came out and initially presented this to you, had a contract with the village to do some of that upfront work. Typically, that's part of this bid. And so what we did is we applied his contract against this. So, you know, he'd done some of that upfront work that is normally part of what we would do. So we took that off of there. Bond council came in a little cheaper. The underwriter discount, which is how the underwriters make money on the deal, they took less than the maximum amount. So that was almost about $5,000. And so with all those savings and the application of the rounding amount, we were able to add that $39,000 on the project. Any questions on that sheet? Next page is just the... On the far left side is the actual repayment schedule and the actual interest rates that the underwriters bid on. And as you can tell, based on the comparison of the preliminary amount, the interest over the length of the bond is about $17,000 less than what we showed you a month ago. The next page, page six, is just showing that with that debt service change, which wasn't really a big difference, that your coverage column, which is the second one from the right, which needs to be at 1.25 of your net operating revenues, is well above that. So you're in really good shape as far as your coverage for the electric utilities. So that still stands pretty good. And then the last schedule that I included just was the way the interest rates looked. It's like, as I told you, we're still in a really good market. They're coming down again. And even this is missing probably another downturn that we just got notified this week of that, you know, it went down from last week as well. So it's still going down. You hit the market still at a really good time. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, if you could approve by roll call both.
I would make a motion to adopt a resolution number 19-48.
Any more discussion? I guess we're ready, don't we?
All right. Michael Bell.
Yes.
Mike Ancher.
Yes.
Pete Cruz.
Yes.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen.
Yes.
Peter Mestry.
Yes.
Roger Tratt.
Yes.
I was thinking maybe...
Maybe we'll have new chairs one of these times.
I was like, I feel like I'm kind of starting to...
Dave's going to sit here for the next item.
Yeah, I didn't know I was on for two things. It's a surprise.
Item 10. Discussion consideration. Resolution 1946. Supporting Bond Trust Services Corporation as fiscal agent in connection with certain outstanding obligations.
Does your notes have something that you already presented in there? I can answer questions on it, but did you have a summary or anything of what James gave you?
We did have a brief summary. I know we've been working with another gentleman at...
James Hi.
James Hi, who does the... Is in charge of the paying agent. And this kind of goes back to your point that we just discussed with having a paying agent for all of our borrowings other than the local bank ones. But some of these have required it. So we do have a paying agent on some of our big borrowings through others. Some of them didn't require it, so we don't... It... We just think that it makes more sense, would be a little bit more cohesive if all of them were the same. So every borrowing we have through others, we have a paying agent. I know just the other day, actually... I didn't tell you that. Depository trust, I made a payment that was due December 1st. I made it on November 29th to make sure because of the weekend. And when I came to work on Monday morning, I get an email from Depository Trust, like, where's your money? And I'm like, huh. And then I have to find a, you know, a phone number of somebody at Depository Trust to call and track it down and make sure. And it was all fine. But it just... Having that paying agent, that person then would be responsible for getting it to Depository Trust and ironing out any issues that went poppin'.
So, you know, as a finance director, I used to do my own paying agent, too. And I think what it was... It wasn't as big of a deal when I started back in 2000 at Monachee. But after seeing, you know, with some of the term bond type of things where you have the chance of, like, blowing something without knowing it, it kind of... I wish I had it in place because, one, the one thing that Bond Trust Services does is they send you an invoice two months ahead, I think, on the one issue that you had.
Let's say Depository Trust, you might get that a week out.
Yeah. So not only do they send you the paperwork a month or two ahead, but also I think you get an email that also gives you... So there's a couple reminders that we're... Our department for the paying agent does that makes you really ensure that you make that payment. And if you miss a payment, one of the bad things that happens is that because you have continuing disclosure, you have to report to an entity called Emma. And if you miss a payment, you can actually affect your bond rating. Well, right now, we don't have one, so it's not as big of a deal. But if we ever go for, you know, if we ever look to see if maybe rating is something that's worthwhile doing, you don't want that blemish on your record. So that's another reason that a paying agent can really help you. Almost an insurance policy that you're going to make your payments and you're going to keep your good name. And you're not going to mess with, you know, the people that are supposed to receive those payments as well, so...
I thought we had a bond rating. It was municipal.
The utility doesn't.
Oh, the utility doesn't. But the village does, alright.
I don't think so.
Really?
I don't remember doing a rating call for the GOs.
Oh.
See, one thing, I think the reason that we don't usually get one here is because depending... Getting to a double A, which would be a nice boost, you have to be... You have to have a lot of value. And really, to get there... I mean, to go and have Moody's tell you or S and P tell you that you're not big enough and end up basically in the same spot as you would be without paying for it, it doesn't really make sense. So I'd hate to lead you down the road of getting a rating only to be paying for what you would have had without one itself. You know, you're basically an A rating as a non-rated, is how they treat you. And your rates that you're getting are pretty good. So we'll take a look at it each time and see if there's... How you match up to the metrics. But at this point, I don't think it's cost-effective.
You just made a comment about A-rated. But not rated?
A...
Maybe that's where I was getting this.
Yeah, non-rated community is typically an A type of entity. So, you know, if you went out and got one, you probably would end up with the same rates, being rated an A, A1 or A2 than you would not being rated. You might get a little bit of a kick, but... But we can take a look at that as the next one, wait for the library one and see if it's worthwhile.
Probably won't be helping money.
Well, we definitely don't want to spend money on something you don't need, so...
So anyway, this resolution just lists the four that are currently not... Currently don't have a paying agent.
And the ones that have paying probably had term bonds and just like this issue had.
So it would be just add three?
Yeah.
And the cost?
Well, the one that just came on had an initial cost of 500, but I don't think it's that every year. Do you... Did he give you a...
Give us an agreement. I'm going to look at it.
Maybe page 46?
Yeah, 46.
400? Annual? Is that per issue?
So there's initial fee of 450 and annual fee of 400.
And that's for all four bonds that are outside of that? Is that what you're saying, Lynn?
I guess I'm not clear on that.
I don't see that.
You answered that at one point. I'm guessing you...
Yeah, I don't have it with me as far as... That's the fee. So that's closing. So that's what we usually charge when you actually do borrowing.
I'm not positive, but I think it might be per issue because I believe I added 1,600 to the budget in anticipation.
Yeah, that would be my... That would... I think that's per issue.
Yeah. And I think that's what I... It seems like I had added 1,600 to the debt service budget in anticipation of this happening.
Yeah, that makes sense to me Yeah, that, that makes sense to me. Cause typically when you get the invoice, I think on the principal payment, it'll be on that invoice as well. And again, I think the biggest benefit is if there's employee turnover from someone who's here when the bonds were issued to, my payments start coming in, if there's a change there, is when the mix-up might start occurring. If someone misses a payment because they didn't know it, it didn't even exist and they don't get it with enough time. So it's a relatively low cost.
It's kind of insurance for.
For some rather large financing, yeah.
And Lynn, I'm trying to think what I was just gonna say. Oh. Come on. Okay, forget it. It went away.
So it's, I mean, it's obviously a low cost.
Insurance.
By any means, but how do we know, since we didn't know here, what this covers, is we iron down to per issue going forward?
So this is for the one, existing ones we have that we don't currently have a paying agent for, correct?
Like, like this one tonight required a paying agent, so that automatically happens. We don't have the option to decide.
So and this per, per issue covers our current.
Yeah, and it's these four that are listed in that resolution that don't currently have a paying agent listed for them.
So future borrowers.
Future would decide is.
But like Lynn's idea of consistency, because it's, it's very hard to have inconsistency. This one's taken care of, this one's not. And then you have to keep.
And in all honesty, when, even when you know that a payment is coming, you're like, okay, I'm, where's the notice? Who's the notice coming from? I haven't gotten a notice yet. I think I called Sue once or twice on that. Like, you know what? I have a payment and I know it's due this day, but I haven't gotten the notice yet.
And the other thing that happened this year is Depository Trust changed their way to do things. And I think that, it was getting more difficult on that side too, wasn't it?
Well, they're, they're coming later. Yeah.
Cause they have changed the way, the methodology as well. And that's something that.
Principal.
There's a lot of places that have been changing over because Depository Trust is, is making it almost more difficult to get, you know, you don't get this stuff on time or very close. It's way too close to the time that it's due. This way, you're getting an invoice, you can run through your normal check runs, it can be ready to go. And, you know, you'll have plenty of time to set it up in your payables. Or you can wire it.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution nineteen forty-six.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just to be clear, so this, this resolution would cover these, these bonds until their maturity?
Yes, correct.
Until maturity dates, I should say.
The annual administration fees locked in with your maturity. Is that a possibility?
They would notify you first.
It has not changed a lot since I was doing it. I remember a three fifty a month, so it hasn't really increased a great deal. So.
I would say early two thousands, it was three fifty, maybe.
You could probably, well, you'd be able to go back and see some of those older issues. But I was, I was in Monachee, two thousand, two thousand and sixteen. I had a couple issues that because they return bonds, I, that's why.
Okay. Oh, there's the eye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Here, we'll give these for you.
I think that's it for the year. You don't have to see me again this year. It's only been like five times, right? Oh, that's right. Waiting for something, aren't I?
Yes.
I might even actually take a picture of it while I'm here so I can give you a little.
Should we all close?
Sure. Send that off to the, the, actually, I'll send it to James, but he'll see that one.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you. I'll send him the other term.
Yeah, you know, the resolutions just go to the polls.
Yep, I got a letter for them. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven, request of prison youth committee to use the chamber hut on Sixth and New Parkin Line. Here to speak to.
Great, sorry.
Go ahead, dude.
Village received a request for use of the hut. It's the one out in front of Blumenlot, if you're not familiar with it, to sell beverages and snacks out of the hut on December fourteenth from ten AM to four PM. Chamber currently uses the hut for promotional activities and the chamber is supportive of the request. Youth Committee is sponsoring the event and they have provided the necessary insurance to the village. Since we have the insurance staff recommending approval, it's the first time we've done something like this, which is why it's come into the board, because we didn't know if it was a, if this was considered a park use or another permit. Didn't seem to be covered by any permit we currently have. So it's, it is a village owned land. We aren't entirely sure who built the structure that's there, but if there, there's an ability to plug in for an electricity, the sponsor said that they would take care of that if they had to do that. You'd have to run up the electricity from Blumenlot probably if they required it. But we're not anticipating having to do that necessarily. And if they do, they are able to provide for themselves. So relatively limited use and staff didn't see a reason why it could be approved.
I think it's great. Someone's finally gonna do something. Kind of just, I mean, it's a cute little place, but it just sits there empty. Like, what's it, so I think it's awesome.
It's got, it's got information in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chamber books and stuff.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty invisible and so.
It'll be nice to have some, a human body inside it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, seems like a really good idea.
So we need to make a motion, do you think?
Yeah, yep.
Make a motion to approve the use of the chamber hut.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Here in none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, motion carries. Okay, you're good to go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Try to remember tomorrow. That would be nice, yes.
Is it gonna be an emotion of going closer?
Yeah.
I want someone to go closer.
Uh, I will as soon as we go through the roll call. Was there a second?
I'll second.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Mike Ganser.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Yes.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen.
Yes.
Peter Stride?
Stride.
Stride. Roger Trutman?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Let's go.
Yeah.
Do you want these back?
You can all come and keep it or you can give it back to me?
I couldn't. I tried.
Oh, it is.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the review as is with back pay to the date of twelve months, as the letter's dated, September.
This is twelve month anniversary.
Twelve month anniversary date. Second.
Any more discussion? Here in none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
You're good. Good. Thanks. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Can I speak at this or?
Yeah.
One of the things I like.
No.
One of the things I like working in Blair's over the county is I'm on one-on-one with everybody here. I've always said, you can always come talk to me. And I've had plenty of board members come and ask me questions and stuff like that. And that's what I like to see. You know, different things that we're doing. I really like the support when we need it. And I try to show you guys as much as we possibly are doing out there and what we need to catch up on to try to get up to standards of today. But working with Drake, since Drake's been here, has been great. We have this one thing that we always say, and I've been saying it a long time, is we can't fix it in here. It's gonna take us a while to understand it and get a lot of things done. So I appreciate your support. I'm here.
I, I think when we're in closed session, well, I couldn't talk about closed session, but I think that all of us can relate to citizens coming up and saying what kind of a good job you're doing.
Yeah.
I'm sure I have ones that complain. That happens.
Yeah.
I, I, and honest truthfully, I'd like the better of that. I don't know if there's anybody that, you know, if there is a complaint, you know, I'd like to hear it so that way I can, you know, help that person out, you know. For instance, today, I kinda had my butt chewed by a taxpayer, but hey, in the long run, it is what it is. That's part of the job. So.
Well, probably any good time is we all.
But is there, is there anything that you'd like to see more of? Is there anything that you'd like to see out of me?
I think that you've got a copy of the evaluation.
From Drake, yes.
Yeah, and I think we would all agree with that. Or at least I would anyway. I'll speak for myself. So just work on those, on those areas. And it's not by any means degradation on your part.
Everybody comments about how you just jump into things and Chuck made the comment about it's nice to be on the other end of getting compliments rather than criticisms and, of course. So that's great.
We got a ways to go. I mean, we got a ways to go. And the other thing that I'd still like to do is I'd still like to take a tour with you guys.
Yeah.
See, get to see some of the things that I'm really seriously dealing with. That's
Yeah, I was just thinking that coming here today, that we'll have to schedule that right after the holiday.
Some of this, I, some of this I have fixed, but you will see that. But some of it, literally right now, I do not have the budget to even worry about.
So let me ask you this then. Coming into this position, were there, was there anything that was a total surprise to you that it's been difficult getting over? Or it was a surprise that you would have to face this? Or, you know, that frustrates you still?
The, the only thing that I see, and it's hard to explain it, you know, I was asked here, and you were there, Roger was there, I was asked, you know, how do you treat people that have years of experience, like some of them that we have here? It's hard to explain to them when they've been here that long on how far different between utilities and streets really is. You know, utilities is going their own way and that isn't run like a business. It's ran very well. It always has been. Now we're gonna do the biggest upgrade that it's probably ever seen in its life. So that's gonna be a big change for all of us. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of stuff that we're gonna have to work through, talking with engineers, everything on that. The aspects, what they don't understand is in the streets, how far behind we are. When they talk about how much of an upgrade we're doing with electrical, if I had to put my streets up to it, we dominate that like it was nothing. And they don't understand, like, we just had, I had an engineer group come in and they actually had a class with us, we're at the fire station, on how to grade manholes. The guys that I have never took off manholes. There's, there's manholes that we have in the system once they were put in. They've never pulled the covers. I don't see how that could ever happen. I mean, you have to inspect them. You have to jet a certain amount of percentage a year. And this is the thing, and we're dealing with a lot of INI infiltration and inflow into our water system down there, that we don't know where it's coming from. And if we can cut this back and find out where it's coming from, we don't have to look on adding to our wastewater treatment plan because it would be capable of taking it if we fix those INI problems. And it, it's huge. And the biggest thing of this is, is my personnel had no idea that this is even out there. They had no idea that we are actually supposed to pull storm grades and vacuum them, vacuum them and literally like grade them to know where we're at. And what I'm running into is we're, I guess in, in, in short term, we are so far behind on that, that to get the daily things done with the two guys that I have and myself, and I spend a lot of time on streets, not in the office, it's gonna be hard to catch that up. It really, really is. And when you put a big picture on it, as in, you know, we're dealing with leaves now, that, you know, this is a whole new process here with new guys here that, you know, we weren't expecting weather like this. This year is really bad.
Terrible.
But the biggest thing of it is, is we have to change our guns to say, when we say the date of the first, we are no longer gonna put leaves to the curb on the first. We have to stick to that ordinance. And I hate to say that, but I know Drake might be able to speak up from some purry, but if they put brush in their stuff and anything like that, I mean. I don't wanna interrupt you, Joe, but we shouldn't. Okay. I'm just back to related to the evaluation. Okay, so yes, that's what I run into. And, and I'm working with it and they're starting to see it, but before it was never explained to them. Because they didn't figure they needed it.
Well, you know, you're facing, I guess.
Yeah. I just wanna add one short piece on that with what, what you're saying is that we get graded, the village actually gets graded by the DNR according to what our maintenance package is on the sewers and the storm sewers. And that comes down into our, our maintenance agreement. And we get graded. And if we get an F sometime, I don't know what, what's gonna happen.
Our grades right now, just to let you know, our grades are some of the top.
Yes.
I mean, we, we are really good. The question of it is, is what will happen in the future if things keep decaying.
Yeah, so we gotta, we've gotta be proactive on that.
So let us know how we can bring stuff to.
I think you guys are already doing it. You, you're supporting a lot of things and it's just gonna be in the future. We're gonna have to work on it. But I gotta work with Drake first and we gotta figure out how we're gonna do it. Project by project.
Yep.
So we're, we're all appreciative and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I got to go.
Okay, thank you.
Really well.
Sorry, Roger. Tomorrow we're gonna tear up your road.
Just don't block my driveway. That's all I.
We're gonna keep you up?
No, I'll be up.
Okay. No problem.
Make all the noise you want.
Make it interesting. Move to the turn.
Any further business? Here in none, we are adjourned.